Good evening. This is a meeting of the entire, not so entire, Athens City Council. Tonight, our topic is to discuss very quickly speed bumps because I found out that although I knew there were three different proposals for speed bumps, there were four. And it seemed like in the past, it took forever and a day to get speed bumps in, but, and now, all of a sudden, you know, there's a possibility they could get in more quickly. And so, I was wondering if the different groups could discuss what they were proposing. I talked to Michelle Drebold, and she will not be here. They worked very hard individually and took speed meter readings, and that's what I told everyone we had to do in order to get a speed bump, but apparently, there will be some relief from that requirement. But we do have the bump on North Congress Street, which, incidentally, Michelle says needs to be replaced because it's falling apart.
It was intended to be a temporary one.
Was it the temporary bump on North Congress?
Yes.
They would also like to have a traffic calming device between, on the either side of Highland Park, and they've talked about it. There's been, there've been several days of discussion about it. Maybe it's been on the table for a year or so. In the absence of an Anna person, that's the first one I knew about. And when we were on the street tour, yeah, and Stephanie would be, currently owns the property, and I was actually going to ask the city owners and Stephanie and Sam Crowell to see if we could bump on either side of the park to slow down the traffic up there, you know, as an option, because we're now moving, and Ray will be explaining that in a second. And then, the next group is the group on the North Hill, and Stephanie and Kathy, yeah, both of you could, each of you in turn could get up and talk about what you were doing. One time, one hand, one side of the street was one group, and the other side was the other group, and then, finally, they met. Lois Garrick and Stephanie, I think, were involved in one, and then, in the middle of the block, we had a different person. So luckily, I found out you were doing it, and there was a short circuit, so I was happy to hear that. The short circuit is that Ray has a different, slightly different strategy, maybe, beyond forever and a day.
You wrote it.
Yeah, because it seemed like it took forever the last time. Okay, so either of you want to get up and talk about what you propose, or you don't want to? I mean, I don't know what's your, what's your issue? Yeah, please. Steph. Stephanie Goldsberry. Currently living on the North Hill, now down, oh, yes, I forgot to tell you all to turn off your cellphones.
Turn off your cellphones.
Turn off your cellphones.
You don't want my number. Stephanie Goldsberry, currently at North Hill Drive, above Highland Park. I've lived there for 30 years. We're getting ready to downsize and move to North May, so that's how I've gotten involved with Cable Lane people. I would say I probably have a lot of experience with Highland Avenue and Roosevelt and speeding. In fact, with the use of my big voice, I have slowed down several people. And if needed, it will be used at North May also, the stop sign. Yes, it's a very dangerous place because there's no sidewalks on Highland Avenue. We have a lot of children. My kids grew up there. They survived, and others can survive too, but there is more traffic, and cars do drive faster and are more, I think, irresponsible than when my children were small. Just as you see more car seats, which, thank heaven, I'm not a mother that have to deal with all these car seats with kids, that's a sign of the change of times and people's irresponsibility and more vehicles. I would certainly support some method of slowing down the traffic, other than a loud voice, or people even having the speed machine, which helps on a short-term basis. It certainly makes them aware, but when it's gone, so are they. And on North May, I've been working down there enough to know that people run the stop sign, that people come down Cable Lane. I don't, how, anybody has the guts to come down Cable Lane fast? And I've heard enough of the stories of people walking down that way and being afraid that they're going to get hit, and certainly, there's no option, I don't imagine, to walk children down Cable Lane or going up. I don't go that way myself very often at all because of the narrowness of the road, although everybody says it'd be shorter to get home that way. And that, I think, is about the best input I can say. I think the speed bump on North Congress has been effective. Sometimes, I don't like it, admittedly, having to go up there and slow down, and the stop sign has been effective. And I think unfortunately, that more of those kind of things are needed on some of the side streets that people think they can just speed through to get to somewhere else. And that's all I have to say on all those areas.
Okay, and then, what about, you and Lois have coalesced with the other group, and there was just one, right?
Well, I think she's primarily took it over, because Lois did talk to me. I was down there one day, and she sort of crowded me and Henderson about what she was trying to do, because she'd about gotten forced off the road. She had to jump off the road, she said, in a bed of poison ivy. That had not have been, thank heaven, it wasn't me, because I would have been covered with it, and said that, you know, she thought she was going to get hit. So, that's how it really got started, I think, and then, she heard that we had another person working on it, which was very helpful since Lois goes to Florida.
How many people do you have signed up on? She's got them all.
She's the one in charge of that.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you all for having an ear to listen. That's encouraging in another song.
I should ask you to do your name and address first.
Yes, it's Katie Carruth, and I'm 35 Cable. This has come about because of all the construction on Cable Lane. We finally feel like maybe it's the perfect opportunity to instill a bit of safety measures on a road that, as I understand, would not be built today. It's extremely narrow, very, very steep, and has way too much traffic on it. And it's not local traffic, it's, it's a cut-through. It's a cut-through for a state park and for many people that live outside of Athens City. What we have done is petitioned all the neighbors on Stroud's Run, the short part of Stroud's Run that, that is on this side, I guess, of the highway, and on Cable Lane. We have only had one negative comment, and it's from a person that owns a sports car that doesn't feel like they would like to go over a speed bump in their car. But other than that, everybody seems very positive that this is something that, that is a safety measure that does not hurt anybody's quality of life, and in fact, could perhaps protect somebody's life. So, though maybe no one really likes to drive over speed bumps, it really doesn't affect your life in any negative way. So, what we have here are four pages of signatures. There are people that have been out of town that I have not been able to reach. And also, one picture of speed bumps that everybody seems to be in favor of. This would allow for cyclists to get down the hill still without having to go over the bump, would allow cars to keep two wheels on the flat road during icy conditions and that sort of thing. But you would still be hitting the speed bump, and if you're going, you know, too, too fast, it is, it's a wide bump, so that it wouldn't itself cause an accident. So, that's really, I'm sort of telling you what people have told me. Everyone on Cable Lane is very, very concerned. There's few children on the street. And, yeah, it's just a small thing that can make a pretty big impact in the safety of our neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you for your action, and I believe you have petitions for...
For you, and here's this, and Cable's obviously not that wide, but there you go.
Okay.
Any other people from the north, that area, that want to speak? Doctor? Go ahead. You have to get up and say, give your name and your address.
Especially, go ahead.
Don't be shy.
I'm Frank Myers, and Lorraine and I live at 43 Stroud's Run Road. If we really want people to come to our house, we tell them to think of 43 Cable Lane, because after they cut Stroud's Run Road off for the bypass, it really looks like we're part of Cable Lane. But we use Cable Lane a lot. It's frequently much shorter for us to get to the places we're going, like the post office, or even downtown is, is usually shorter for us to use Cable Lane than it is to go around on Columbia and the short strip of Stroud's Run Road. As you know, there's plenty of traffic on Columbia anyway, and a couple of intersections there that are really kind of interesting.
Oh, yes.
On Columbia. And so, it may be that we really made a mistake by buying a house up there, because we've got to go one way or the other, or we're not, we're not, well, we, you know, we could, we could go out to 550 and come back that way, but...
Being hollow.
But that does take quite a little longer. Cable Lane is rough enough now, so that I usually travel about 10 or 15 miles an hour, not because that's the speed limit, but because it's just no fun to hit a bump real hard. And so, if we make it nice and smooth and then put a few speed bumps there, I really can't see how anybody could notice much of a difference. There are stop signs here and there, and many times, we see people go through the stop signs. Most people stop, at least when I'm stopped at a stop sign, most people stop. But we do see people go through without even slowing down. Lorraine and I used to, in years past, maybe 15, 20 years ago, we used to walk down Cable Lane to number 35 to pick up trash, and along the sides of the road. And we just liked the way it looked a lot better for our own taste, and we'd collect several large garbage bags full of trash in a day or two, and then, we probably wouldn't do that again for a month or two. It's been years since we've done that, because walking on Cable Lane is just too much excitement for me. So, if we could slow things down a little bit, I will not increase congestion by walking on Cable Lane. I walk at the community center, but it would be awfully nice, and we'd be very grateful. Rumble strips are certainly better than nothing. On Richland Avenue, there are rumble strips which are very nice. They make a nice noise if you go over them fast, and the faster you go, the more noise they make. But I've noticed there are a lot of people drive on Cable Lane who don't care much about the noise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. Anyone else?
Hello. Mark Fish, 35 Cable Lane also. My husband, my wife, Catherine, ran the petition. I would just like to add to everybody's comments and say, we have the privilege of living on one of the nicest roads in Athens, if not the most picturesque, and people walk it, cycle it, every single day of the week, and every single day of the week, people almost get into accidents. We've been run off the road, neighbors have been run off the road, and we've had to call the police about the police driving too quickly down Cable Lane. When, when, on our part of the hill, unfortunately, it's, it's the steepest and, I guess, the riskiest part of the hill. It's a 20 mile an hour speed limit, and the police say, "Well, we can't, we can't come up there and run radar guns because it's too windy and there isn't enough distance," et cetera, et cetera. But they say to us, "Well, how quickly do you think the cars go down the hill?" And we say, "You drive down the hill at 40 miles an hour, we estimate." There's something wrong, there's a serious problem, and before long, somebody is going to get injured, somebody is going to get killed, and God forbid, if that's my children, I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old. We walk up and down the hill regularly, we stroll, we take them for walks in the stroller. And we really don't want to feel threatened by people using Cable Lane as a racing track, a bypass, a short circuit, rather than neighbors. Neighbors seem to understand that it's, it's a pretty scary road. Unfortunately, people who drive through Cable Lane or use Cable Lane to get from A to B don't see it that way, and so, we'd be very grateful if something could be done about that. Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Anymore from that particular area? I think there's a discussion, because we have a fourth area where there's a request for speed bumps, for that north area from Stroud's Run to, Stroud's Run Road from the stop sign all the way around by David Reeser's house, and the other houses there, by the Myers' house, and then down the hill. So, that's an area where traffic calming devices, especially speed bumps, are requested. Anybody else from that area that wants to speak?
Who wants to speak? Okay.
Okay. We got her to do it good.
Marilyn Sawyer, 20 Cable Lane. I'm on down where it becomes a straightaway, and that's where they really pick up some speed, and they just fly through there. And I know it's challenging to go 25 miles an hour, because that really is quite slow, especially in the lower areas, but up at the top, you should not, is it 20 or 25?
Well, our, from their house on up...
Is 20?
It's 20.
And, and if you go over that, you're in great danger of hitting any, a number of obstacles. And, yeah, the amount of walkers and bikers that take that road, there, it's just not compatible with fast cars.
Thank you, Marilyn. Anyone else? We're ready, then? So, this is our, we have several different, this is two and three respectively, and the fourth one, we've had on in our hands for some time, and maybe Chris Fall could speak about that, another request for traffic calming.
My name's Chris Fall, and I live at 35 Morris, and I'm co-chair of NINA. And NINA has, one of the quality of life issues that NINA has identified, NINA, the Near East Neighborhood Association, has identified is that the neighborhood has been inundated by people who have a hard time looking at the speed limit and, and regulating their speed to coincide with their speed limit. So, as a project for NINA, we put together a neighborhood association, traffic neighborhood study. And this is something that other neighborhood associations, I would really encourage to do, because we didn't look at just Cable Lane, and we didn't look at just Morris Avenue. We got together, people at a neighborhood, a large neighborhood meeting, got maps out that Andy Stone provided, and put, got little sticky tabs of different colors, red for, like, people who didn't stop, and green for people who were speeding, and other colors, and put them on the neighborhood for places that people identified as dangerous places. And so, we put together from that, that meeting and several other meetings that we got together with the subcommittee, looking at this, identifying numerous areas of traffic calming possibilities. And I think this is the way to do it for neighborhoods such as NINA, which is kind of a, you know, kind of a, a place that you can put boundaries around. There's two problems with, with traffic. There's kind of a vehicle numbers problem, that's the cut-through, people going into the neighborhoods that don't live in the neighborhoods, that are using the neighborhood as the cut-through, the easy way to get between East and Stimson, between, you know, East State Street and Stroud's Run. I mean, we all have these problems. And then, there's kind of the, that number of, the speed of vehicles, and that can be people who live in the neighborhood. I mean, it doesn't have to be people who are not from the neighborhood. So, you have to look at, at traffic calming in two different areas. What our organization did was identify quick and easy solutions, which was identifying areas that needed the lights to be increased, the pedestrian crossing lights to be increased, because people have a hard time scuttling across the street really quick, and trying to reduce traffic, the speed, traffic speed in certain parts of the neighborhood, and those sort of things, which the city can do very quickly and very cheaply. And then, we identified hazardous traffic conditions and prioritized those. Our neighborhood has had a baby boom. Just in Morris Avenue, between where our house is, which has crossed Jaggers, down to Cornwell, just in that small little area, there are 17 school, school-aged children, and they range from, you know, about two on up to junior, senior high school, but a majority of them are going to East School. That's the same in several other areas of the Near East Side neighborhood. And there's a problem, because those areas that have stop signs and crosswalks, people ignore them. People ignore the crosswalks and sidewalk, and stop signs. Wallace and Morris, it's an accident and a child waiting to be killed. I have been in the crosswalk with children when somebody has gone through the stop sign, going by. I have screamed at people, and my kids, it's really funny when we all stand there and, you know, seven-year-olds scream, "Slow down!" Where people have gone through the stop sign, I have screamed at them, and they have come around and told me they didn't enjoy being screamed at by a person on the sidewalk. And I'm like, "I'm, I'm sorry, I don't like people, you know, endangering my children." Shannon and Maplewood is a similar situation, where there's an extraordinary amount of children. They fly through that stop sign. There are several places that the stop signs are completely ignored. There's the May Avenue-Morris Avenue cut-through that people speed down Morris Avenue, probably, I've seen people cut, you know, speed down Morris Avenue doing 65 or 70. It's just extraordinarily dangerous. And so, what NINA has, has emphasized with our meeting with Andy is traffic calming through the whole neighborhood, because if we do one thing to cut down traffic access on Morris or May, it will shove it onto May, you know, or onto Shannon. We've identified certain places that are priority, because we realize that there's budget constraints and stuff. Morris Avenue and Wallace, the stop, the crosswalk there has been our number-one priority. What we'd like to see, people talk about speed bumps. I would encourage people who want speed calming devices to call them speed humps, because speed bumps are those things in crosswalks or in parking lots that are really big. There's a lot of really innovative programs out there, and I have a, my traffic plan, the draft plan that we put together for NINA, has several internet sites that shows these really innovative speed humps, raised crosswalks, raised intersections, change of paving, that all go to slowing down people and telling people, "This is our neighborhood." Gateways can do the same thing, putting in signs that say, "Welcome to our neighborhood," doing constrictions, changing parking patterns. And so, what I would, would emphasize is that council, and Ray needs to think of this in a holistic way, so that we can start a process of making the whole city more calm with traffic and encouraging kind of pedestrian and bicycle safety. And what we would like to see on Morris Avenue and Wallace is a raised sidewalk, which is basically, they have one out in front of Baker Center, which is basically a big giant, very wide speed bump with a sidewalk printed on it with warning signs on both sides. And so, we, we think that that will help to slow down the speed significantly and to give pedestrians more safety area. We would also like constrictors on two sides of it, which is where you build out sidewalks and kind of make choke points, so the road is a lot narrower. Narrow roads, people tend to slow down, and so, so we, we would like to work with city and with Ray. We've already started the process with Andy and working with it, and doing a holistic process and a program to try to address these, because we don't want to shove it on to each progressive street. And I think that Cable Lane could be in, kind of pulled into this process. And we'll let you know when we have our next committee meeting, and we can look at this and then maybe make this a model for the rest of the city, looking at some of the other issues.
Thank you. So, raised sidewalks would be the first, one of the first...
Raised, a raised crosswalk with choke points, and I'm more than happy to meet with anybody, and if people want the interim draft report, they can email me, I'm at fall@ou. So, everybody, you have my email. So, I'm more than happy to meet with people and talk about traffic calming and stuff, so...
Thank you. And incidentally, Chris, the bike people will be back, because they have some issues as well with a map with stickies on it to talk to...
Yeah, yeah, I've been, I've been talking with Amy and stuff, so, but I, holistic is the way.
It's just like everybody's on the same page, almost.
Yep.
All right. Any questions or ideas? Yeah, Jim?
Well, Christine gave me a good idea, and the report gave me a good idea of where they're talking about traffic calming devices. I'm not exactly sure in the Cable Lane, Stroud's Run, Highland area, where they're suggesting that we do things.
Highland area on both, on either end of the park.
Both sides of the park, okay.
I would suggest they get a map. Andy will give you maps. He gave us big, giant maps that we worked with our neighbors and, and did, because you may find that other people have some other issues, parking issues or those other things that you can...
They don't have parking.
Work with, you know, work with your neighbors.
No parking.
And Andy's great. He's just really, he's very on board with this sort of stuff, so...
Okay. So, what we were trying to do tonight, then, is to pull together the ideas to let you know that other parts of the city, people have some of the same issues, and I was hoping that eventually, fairly quickly, I think Ray has speeded up and has streamlined the process, and I expect to see that we'll be talking soon, unless you want to talk tonight.
Well, in terms of specifics, what Andy and I have been trying to work towards in a number of different areas is basically establishing a process, because we have these same issues all over the city. So, it's something that we, we want to have a methodology and a logic and a rationale in place, so that as we try to prioritize and put into effect the different processes and the different methods to solve these problems, because there are, there are tons of different methods to use for traffic calming. It's just interesting that one of the most effective usually is curvy roads, which Cable Lane is a curvy road. But, now, to make a long story short, I've got a list from the police department, I've had copies of information that's come to me, I've received information from Andy, there's stuff that's been in the file from prior times. We've got to, we started in October, working on a number of different policies and procedures. We're also looking at street lighting and the safety in the neighborhood. So, we want to tie all of these, these issues together and put a process in place, so that you know that if you get a yes, no, an alternative, or whatever, for your neighborhood and your, your ideas, that there was a process, and you got the same consideration as anybody else in the city. So, that's, that's my big concern at this point, because I think all of the input and involvement of citizens is an important thing, because it wouldn't make sense for us to go out and put a lot of traffic calming devices in if the neighborhood associations or the people who live on that street don't want it. So, it's important to know that it's wanted, you know, and those, that moves things up on priority lists. You know, we all know how the system works, and if you're not part of the, the group that's presenting your needs before the, the city, it's not likely that anybody's going to hear it, so, I think this is an important part of it. So, we do want to work with you, and Andy is, is the key pivotal person. I depend on him, because he does the, the research on Ash-toe and ODOT, and we compare notes, you know, I do a little bit of web surfing to find things, but he's the engineer. We work with Burgess and Niple to talk about different traffic methodologies to be put in place, so, I can't tell you whether it's going to be 90 days, or six weeks, or, or whatever, that, you know, that you're going to get an answer, but you will get an answer.
Thank you, Ray. Just to clarify, then, we're not requiring that the citizens check speeds anymore, is that correct?
No, no.
Okay.
Because that's not, that's only one, one of the considerations, and generally, speed's a safety issue because of relativity. And just as was mentioned, if you take some of the curvy sections down Cable Lane, which reminds me of a road that I used to live near when I lived in the country called Chicken Coop Hill Road...
Much less...
Yeah, yeah, same kind of thing. If you go over 15 or 20 miles an hour, you're crazy. But that doesn't, doesn't stop some people from trying.
Or really, an immature driver.
Yeah.
Which has been the problem several times. Okay, anybody else with a point? Yes?
Just a point. I'm almost glad that we are working on solving this problem, because 16 years ago, I remember when Morris Avenue residents were here, it was quite a very different issue, and it was a fear of it becoming an all-rental property, student neighborhood, and to hear that there are 17 kids between two streets of Chumane, lets me know that a lot of the things we tried to do back then must have been effective, so...
Yep.
Now, it's time to solve the definite issues, so...
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate coming and telling us in public what you'd like. I live on one of those streets. I know that we've had the speed checks... I know that we've had the speed checks and twenty-five miles an hour is the speed it's supposed to be. And they, the average was clocked at thirty-five. And, you know, that means that they were going close to maybe eighty-five in a seventy zone. You know, I mean, you start doing their proportions and you can see the problem. So people don't really think about it, you know, and I get tired of being booped at trying to get out of my driveway, but that's a whole nother story. Polly?
The West Side has the same type of stuff. Just before I got, came here, there was actually a message on my machine. The owner of many houses on Foster Place would like to see a speed bump on Foster Place. If anybody knows that location, it's not much of a road. So the petition action may work in some cases and may not in others. There's been concern on Second and Central as well, which is cut through in front of the West Elementary. One of the things I know I brought up to Andy Stone a while back was the idea of purchasing more of those SAMs, the metered speed signs that will tell you how fast you're going. The one we have now is at least ten years old. And it'd be nice if we have a few more on, in our inventory so we could place in various places. At least they have the action, if I understand, to record the speed as well as to tell you how fast you're going. So they could, in theory, do an aggregate calculation of how the average speed in that particular road at any given time, even though people slow down, show that. That would be one easy way to find out what we have. I assume we also have records of traffic accidents and of that nature by location? And that's what you're correlating to?
We're looking at that, but that, that's sort of like waiting for a fatal accident to correct a problem. We don't, you know, we want to look at the accident rate, we don't, we don't want to use that as a deciding factor.
No, no. I understand the idea of a petition and the citizens coming. But the idea is that there will be lots of speed bumps requested as a result. I know people on Hanlon would like to see one and West Hills. And then you add other places too, Second and Central in particular.
And I think it's important as we, as we try to deal with these issues to recognize, as we use traffic calming, traffic calming is also traffic discouraging. So if you can slow the traffic down, the persons who want to speed through your neighborhood are going to say, "Well, I don't want to take that route any longer because it takes me an extra thirty seconds to get through town, so I'm going to find another route." And it falls back to what Chris was saying. Chris was saying, you know, we want to try to look at it and sort of ham in, ham in the issue rather than just moving it from one place to the other.
Yeah, I understand that. Essentially, a lot of them are cut through traffic, whether it's Cable, Morris and May. And I'd say Second and Central is a big one right there.
But other than being hollow, there's really no way down the hill. It's either Cable, it's Madison. It could be Highland Congress or else it's Lancaster. I mean, if you're going to, so somebody's going to have to bear the traffic.
Do we need to connect a road here? Is that what you're telling me?
No, I don't know what I'm telling you. I'm just telling you that, Nina, we've already been down that road. All right. So thank you again for coming. And I have a couple more items to share with my fellow council members. And we'll be going on to transportation next. Thank you very much. All right. I passed out the, again, thank you for coming. A unnecessary noise, public peace ordinance that Gary's come up with with some definitions in it. And I'd like you to go over that so we can get it done before the sessions are over. Maybe we can meet on it next week. We also are, I hope that we're buying some noise meters. A noise meter, right? We are, yes. So we'll arm the citizens and they'll be dangerous. Okay, so look at that sometime when we, as you can see, it's a work in progress, not to be rushed. It's just hard to get through that. Next thing is on twenty-five Central, I just wanted to update you. The maximum amount needed is twenty-three-five, of which nineteen-five from Athens Enhancement and four thousand from CDBG. Next week, we'll talk about that. That's what we need to do. I talked to Debbie about it and they're going to make every effort to get three bids so that they get the best possible price on updating our house on Central Avenue. But even so, if you think about how much houses are selling for in this town, a good up, a good upgrade, that is. And continuing the maintenance, which seems key as well, twenty-five thousand is, with the additional support of Tri-County, is a great deal. And we'll have a Section Eight house that is usable by a family on Central Avenue. So of that, I'm going to give this to Jim then, and then you can proceed with that.
And if in doubt, go by, drive by and take a look at it.
Take a look at it, yes. The other thing is from the last committee meeting when Bill had me on a rush mode. I would like, next week I'll put in an agenda.
Don't get me started tonight.
I know. Failure to pay a rental permit fee within one year after its date of mailing shall result in the cancellation of the rental permit. Okay? All right. That's coming up.
One year?
One year after failing to pay.
Boy, that's quite the grace period.
Well, okay.
Those fines.
It's much better than it is, was. So then the other thing that we have is City Planning Commission, where we are going to ask, this is a resolution. It can be from all council members because that's the way it's written. Required parking places for rental units shall be provided to the tenant as part of the rental fee. The landlord shall not charge a separate fee for the required spaces. And neither the landlord nor the tenant shall be permitted to sublease these rental parking spaces, which shall be allocated exclusively to the rental units. Okay?
Is there any chance that anybody that is presently doing what they shouldn't do there at the end would be thought to be grandfathered and allowed?
Well, I think that the first step would be to get this through the Planning Commission. And if that happens, then the second step would be to try to amortize it over ten years. Okay? I mean, I don't see any other way to do it. We've done it with signs. And we saw how that went from one administration to the next. It didn't happen. I mean, it just simply did not happen. So let's just go right down to brass tacks there. Okay, there I am. So I guess we're ready for transportation.
Well, yes, Paul?
Okay. I did get an email from Amy, said she wasn't able to make it here. Essentially, the only thing she really wanted to mention were, actually, two things. She was talking about the twenty-four-hour parking rules. She wanted to know a little bit about, talk about hang tags and more of that. But I think we know where we are with that right now. We're still talking about doing one hang tag, et cetera, et cetera, to let people have some, to park longer. She wanted to know a little bit on her email where the requirement for off-site remote parking was or off-site parking was required for landlords or rentals. That's from ninety-seven. The other thing she was talking about is the change of pricing in the in-house paving. I think you sent her and myself a spreadsheet on that.
Yeah, this was a request from Andy. Based on a review of where we are with our paving project, he got some revised figures on the brick rehab costs. And basically what we're trying to do there is, in simple terms, mix cement with the base under the bricks at a certain percentage that'll solidify the, the current dirt base and then allow us to re, those areas that we rework, put them back in shape and expect that they'll last for a reasonable period of time. So that we don't fix a section of brick streets and then two years later it's starting to sink again. So the, the brick rehab cost and then the asphalt, of course, came in higher on the bid than what Andy had anticipated. So we've got that. And we've got some curb work that needs to be done. And we, on Curtis, some curb work and some joint work. And then also some work, curb work that needs to be done on Fremont. So the long and the short of it is, he's asking us for an additional fifty thousand dollars to do street repair work this summer.
Okay, that's another, is that total of fifty-six?
The fifty-six, two-fifty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize for not getting a spreadsheet, but I actually thought our meeting started at seven until I walked in the door at six-thirty.
To do your homework.
To do my homework. I also noticed that you're taking up bricks on Fremont and that's going to be replaced by asphalt. Is that the case? I see you have this.
On Fremont?
Yes, no?
No.
I just might have thought that they were taking up bricks.
They're taking up bricks, yeah.
Maybe they're getting ready to put them back down?
No.
No, that was in the plan, wasn't it?
I think that's one of the ones they're taking them off.
That was one of the places they're taking them off.
So those bricks are going directly to where?
To be used to, to repair other brick streets.
Okay. And you're talking about replacing, re-bricking East Union and Park Place? Is that what I'm seeing?
Repairing them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we would do the rehab to the sub-base.
Okay. So really what we have to do is probably bounces through finance and personnel for the extra fifty-six.
Right.
Okay. Debbie?
Since we're talking about brick streets, there was some discussion after the street tour about the list of bricks, existing brick streets. And council discussing the possibility of adding more of them to the list of streets that we're going to keep brick. Do, I just don't want us to forget about that. This kind of brought that back to the forefront. And I, I don't know if we had a sense of agreement on that or if it was just that it needs to be an agenda item.
I don't think we had an absolute agreement. I mean, I agree. But I, I think that part of the scenario too is Andy's looking at, in the neighborhood, who wants the brick to stay and who does not, that sort of thing. So that the residents have a say on their, on some of the smaller streets. But at the same time, I think, yes, we need to pay attention to that, where we want to keep them and perhaps add to that list.
I would have to agree. I think we wanted to add to the list. I know there was the cost aspect of this, being that it costs more to maintain the bricks or redo the bricks. I know the fact that I just invoked Fremont as one of the ones being lost. I'm going to hear from people in my ward because there are people who would like to see that retained as brick. I know it's in bad shape. We took a tour of it and it's sagging badly. And would require a major rebuild. But again, I know, you know, if you're going to take a consensus and tell you the truth, I think it's all rentals on that, but it's a periphery, the people will like it in a periphery. And you have to look and say, if we start taking the bricks off of, what is it, Elmont, is it? What is it?
Well, we wouldn't dare do that.
We would, we would hear.
They will come to you with torches.
Yes, precisely.
But it's relatively flat, whereas Fremont is hilly.
No, Fremont's fairly flat. It's just hilly because the, it's.
I mean, there's enough of a slope there that.
It's hilly from one side of the road to the other.
It's also gusty.
But again, what you're seeing is that we, we like to keep the streets, brick streets. We just have to decide which ones. I don't think I have a list of all the streets that exist right now that are brick.
We did have one in Andy's.
Oh, hang up? Okay, we'll look at that.
And he has something he's going to say, but what we want to do is look at the list of those that are targeted for removal. Some future meeting perhaps.
Okay.
We should just get that list back out. I think there was a list of streets that are already protected by a council resolution to remain brick. There was a list of streets that are not in that resolution area but are in decent condition. And then there was a list of streets that are in really terrible condition that would be Andy's priorities for getting the bricks up and paving. So I think it was that list in the middle that we were going to talk about. Maybe we can just add it to a future agenda and have that list in front of us.
Yeah, I think our key objective in putting together that list was to be able to devise a preventive maintenance schedule, for lack of a better description. So Andy would know what portion of the brick streets we're going to try to target to rehab every year so that at some point you've gone through all of the streets, you've got them all rehabbed, and then you basically start over again.
I assume you're talking about bricks and other streets in general?
Well, the brick would be, yes, the brick would be a subcomponent of the overall plan. But that's reflective of what we want to do with the bricks. Because then when you come back through for the second cycle, in theory, if you've done the cycle properly the second time through, it should cost, even with inflation factors, it should cost less to redo it the second time through, assuming that your time factor is right, so.
Okay. If I get a chance, I'll print out the, I'll make copies of this spreadsheet that you sent us. As I didn't have time this morning, this afternoon. In terms of the hang tag parking system, the discussion I've been having with people is that we do have a hang tag system in place in this city because of the parking garage and tags of that nature. The concept out there, just to make a synopsis of this, is that we would cover, and I know we're not all in agreement on this in terms of city council. The concept is that you'd get a tag, maybe one tag per household. And this would allow you to park for twenty-four hours on the street, or longer than twenty-four hours on the street, I should say. Some of the discussion has been out there that if you have a curb cut for a driveway and you have off-street parking, you would not get one. There would be a nominal cost. And all the other systems would be negotiable in terms of details. I look at this as, in my ward, I have various streets that have no, very little off-street parking. So therefore, I look at my ward as having a big impact on this. I know Nancy's got some areas like Franklin Grove that have the same conditions. I know there's been discussions saying this, that these are public spaces. On the other hand, I would like to see us to be more pedestrian-friendly and therefore the idea of not having to get in your car every day. These are the concepts that have been talked about. Anybody want to add anything to it? You're welcome to. Carol?
Well, just that I think that the, the concept that we could start out with trial streets that are not the worst impacted, to see how it works. And I really think that the concept works well with the idea of having an ordinance that says if you've got off-street parking for your rental, you must use it for your rental, that partner those two things together. And you might start to make some inroads on the problem.
I'd like to make sure that we are absolutely certain that the people want it on the streets that are targeted. You know, because people came up out of the blue with streets where they would put it in. And I asked people I knew on the streets and they went, "Ah, no." So, I mean, I think you need some volunteers here.
Okay, the objection being what? That people would be parking in front of them day and night and everything?
Well, I think that, you know, if you, if you think it out, there are probably, if it were in my neighborhood, I could think of some objections I would have. You know, that you would have only enforcement between eight and four and so on and so forth.
Why would you say enforcement eight and four?
Because that's when the meter person is around, so.
Okay. In theory, what's happening is you have the meter person going through and chalking tires once every twenty-four hours through.
Between eight and four.
Yeah. Okay, so in theory, if that car gets chalked, if it's not moved in twenty-four hours, it gets a ticket. If it has a hang tag, it doesn't get a ticket. And that's the cutoff. So the eight and four means you put the tag on a certain time and keep going.
Means that some people would be, you could use the parking spaces at other times than between eight and four.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And also, there's not enough parking on many streets. I know if you look at your street on Morris, there's not enough parking, is there? For everybody to have one space?
Yeah, but if you look at parking as a traffic calming device.
Put it on both sides.
Put it on both sides.
Right, there's a lot of.
I mean, they're, they're, and then people way slow down because it effectively makes the road narrower.
I should make her stand up.
Yes.
But we're going to have this discussion when she's here again, so why don't we just do it next time again?
Okay. On the same token, if we don't let people have hang tags if they have off-street parking, then you probably have enough adequate park, adequate parking on Morris. I mean, there's lots of off-street parking.
But what about the students who are permitted legally for three and grandfathered in?
Gee, that's a problem, isn't it?
Well, I don't know. They're citizens too.
Yes, but, okay, and they're citizens. And citizens don't get a hang tag if they have off-street parking. Students don't get a hang tag if they have off-street parking. They have a driveway. They have stacked parking.
Well, that would apply to several other people I've heard used as poster children for this particular effort. So, I mean, it's not a, it's not as, it's not going to be as easy as you think it is.
It's not going to be a perfect solution either.
Oh, I don't think it's easy. I just think it's a possible solution.
Bill?
Before we went to the twenty-four-hour enforcement, I counted a van that was parked in front of my car at one-seventy East State for thirty-six days in a row that someone was living in. If someone on my street, assuming I still live there, had a hang tag, would they be able to use that for a vehicle like that and use it as a rental?
No.
I doubt it. I mean, okay, you're saying that somebody would have no off-street parking, would give their hang tag to somebody else who's living in a van in front of their house or in front of your house. It's possible. Of course, you know, I could always have somebody pitch a tent in my backyard and start charging rent too.
So what is that hang tag worth to rent out?
What?
So how much is that hang tag worth to rent out?
I suspect this would not, this is a far-fetched incident.
Not necessarily.
Oh, I know that.
Because I'll tell you, right now, from what I just heard, the parking places that we have for rentals are not being used for rentals. Tell me how the hang tags are going to always be used for the people that are only in rentals that have no off-street parking and they can't rent it, give it to their rent?
I don't know. Let me think about it. I don't know, let me think about it.
But to follow that up, could, someone could park there for 36 days with a hangtag?
Yes, somebody could park there for 36 days.
Or move it every day and come back to an adjacent spot for 36 days.
Or wipe off the chalk for 36 days.
Right. Neither of those last two though happened very often, I don't think, because, which is why we're hearing the squealing, because the enforcement must be pretty good.
I know it worked. I know when we enforced it, it worked. It, you know...
And I know in 97, we were talking about revisiting it.
No, and I have no trouble with revisiting it. And I love the aspects of remote parking and tying our system in to being able to get people to remote parking and those kind of things. And I'm not too sure that Carol's idea of a few of the streets for hangtags wouldn't be appropriate, but when you're talking in East State Street, where I had 17 years of living and watching people carry groceries and babies up steps and ice, when these systems did work, it was a serious matter when this was implemented. So I do kind of take a little bit of ownership in where we got to, I guess.
Yeah, but part of the rationale, part of the thing that was happening with the storage parking is that we had a series of students, basically freshmen, who couldn't have cars on campus, and they were parking their cars in the neighborhoods. You had storage parking of a different sort. What you're talking about here is that there's a hangtag, there's going to be, everybody who doesn't have a hangtag has to move their cars every 24 hours. Everybody who has a hangtag basically belongs to a house, or it belongs to somebody who sold them the hangtag, and therefore, that person doesn't have a hangtag. So there's a limited amount of hangtags floating around on the street at any given time.
They're not, they can't be for sale, I mean, that would really...
Well, he's, his scenario of the guy in his van...
This is black market, he's talking.
He's talking about...
No, I mean, I think that...
Well, Paul, here, I'm probably the only person in this room that has lived under a hangtag system, and it was in German Village in 1984, to be exact.
I remember when you lived up there, and the parking is draconian up there.
And it was draconian, and I, but that's what it comes down to. I mean, literally, to get that hangtag then, you had to display a utility in your name at that address, and then, on the hangtag, your license number was written on it, and when you got your new license plate, you had to go get your new hangtag, and the new number got written in. So, I mean, that's what it takes for a hangtag system to work in an area where parking is at a premium. So...
I'm assuming that the technology's changed, that you could scan this stuff and do this stuff much quicker, but I don't know. I mean, I don't know what we have right now.
Think about garbage.
What?
Think about garbage.
I know, I don't want to think about garbage. I know what you're saying, though. Okay, we'll discuss it at a longer time at another date, the name is here.
We've never done this, have we, Ben?
I've watched you guys do it, I know you've done it. Any other miscellaneous transportation?
I have tons.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I have some information for you all. This is a report that Paul Mosley put together about spaces in the parking garage, followed by a copy of off-campus rental parking, followed by a document that went out to local businesses to obtain their feelings about the concept of hangtags in the parking garage, hunting license type things. And just a matter of correction, the current hangtags that are grandfathered in are $60, not $85. What's $85 is the full-time rental.
You're talking about the non-reserved?
The non-reserved. The current reserved, this is right, current reserved is 85, but the non-specific, where you just drive around during the daytime and have a daytime parking place, is currently 60. So that was a little confusing at the last meeting. So I just wanted to pass out that information so that you would know what's going on, and at this time, we're really waiting for some input back from the Chamber of Commerce in terms of what the response of the businesses is, and if they really want it. I also, just while I was using up paper, made you copies of the work plan for Ilgard for the county transportation that we got the grant for, and it's now been awarded specifically to Ilgard, and this is their plan. And just ignore the fact that this is also on the back of that, it just happened to be on the same page, so you ended up with it twice. And I think that's all I have for transportation. Any other? Oh, and the bike meeting's tomorrow night, right, at 6:30?
I think so, yes.
And the bicycle racks will be discussed at that time. Okay, that's it for miscellaneous, so.
Okay, so we're done with transportation, then?
And we're starting with arts and recreation. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is Halloween, and just points of information, the noise ordinance will be added into the other ordinances next week, so that we have all three ordinances, plus, remember, we have a fourth because we added the no-glass ordinance, so there are now four contracts, I mean, four ordinances. And contracts was what was on my brain, that's why I said that. What I did, somewhere, made you copies of the event management description that Bujenka made, and you got it by email, and so I just made a copy of that, and on the back of it is sort of my version, which changes a few little things, but I, part of my problem is that I personally don't see the need for council to attach or to have a resolution with this as a part of it. In the first place, council really did not have to approve the events coordinator position. That could have been done administratively. The administration was interested in having council endorse it, just because that seemed like the right thing to do. But for us to then make up a job description, or a contract, or something like that, seems to me outside of our responsibility and our purview. That being said, I did put this together to kind of try to put bullets in terms of what we're after, and so that you could take a look at it, and certainly, this can be passed on to the administration or handled in any way you wish to handle it, but it could just be turned over to Ray. He will be the person that will be hiring this position if we vote for it. So I thought you could just glance through this and see if there's anything that concerns you that's here. I did, I felt very strongly that what we don't want to get into, and it was partly what Debbie and I were getting into, in terms of, do we want to say it should be a soft drink sponsorship, or it should be the folks that are making money off Halloween, albeit the beer distributors? That kind of thing, to me, seems like beyond what we should be doing. This is very simple and open, and expresses basically what, what we're looking for. And I see Jim just circled the five months. And the reason I put the five months is because it would not possibly start before the middle of July, August, September, October, November, middle of December, to get the reports in and be ready for review. That was why I put the five months. One version said five to five and a half months, another said six to six months, and it seemed to me that five was the maximum that we're talking about. Paul?
I see you're talking about December, a possible renewal. I doubt we're going to see, you know, this is like a surge, I doubt we're going to see effective the first year.
I would agree with that. I questioned if council should be passing something to bridge between councils. That was one of the reasons I didn't jump to put in the two years, and certainly, the administration could look at that in perspective. My concern is that I've sat here for, at least four years, I've been talking about Halloween, and every single year, it comes down to, it's too late, we're not doing anything. I'm not okay with that. I think we need to do something.
I agree.
And this would be a start, and if any progress is made, then it seems to me that we could look at the model and say, oh, something good's happening here, and the next council could move forward to do the same thing next year, or the administration could step in and do it.
Okay.
Comments, questions, suggestions of how to proceed? I just don't want us to, by our description, select a person or micromanage the event, and that's why I tried to be very broad here.
So, pretty much for each side, one's just bullets, one's paragraph form?
Pretty much. I made a few little language changes. I de-emphasized the community event, not because I don't think it should be a community event, but I, to insist on that it implied that it should be dramatically changed for more family-oriented, you know, that's great if that happens, and there are some people that have come forward with some ideas and actually volunteered time to get those events going, but that would be, that would be a plus, not necessarily a requirement.
Okay. I see the first part, the paragraph part, contractor will report jointly to the city and Convention and Visitors Bureau, and...
I didn't put that in.
And the second part, okay.
I, yeah, I did not, because again, that was one of those questions, the Convention and Visitors Bureau said they're happy to house the position and give some assistance. We don't have to mandate that, and certainly, if Ray welcomes that support, that would be great, but I just am uncomfortable with the level of our mandating.
And in terms of, you know, one of the things I'm hearing, of course, you know, getting feedback from both sides of this type of stuff.
Me, too.
You know, good money after bad type thing. The other one is, what happens if there's a budget requirement to run something like this? Do we have a, we have a salary in possession, do we have a budget, and is this going to come out, the tourism fund?
What it comes out of is the non-operations part of tourism.
Okay.
It is not out of their operating budget.
Oh, no, no.
It is out of the portion of the hotel tax that the city retains, and there is adequate funds in that fund.
I'm aware of that, yes. Was it 212, I think it is, something like that? Okay. Okay, and I, as I said, I'm willing to try something different. I had a long conversation with many people on the phone, they were saying, how do you feel about this, and why would you vote yes on it? And again, just to try something new and improved, maybe.
How do we want to handle this? Just give it as a recommendation to the administration, or do we want it in some way attached to the ordinance, or as a separate resolution? Anyone have any opinion? Jim?
If this is what we want, then I think it should be part of an ordinance that we passed. If we could agree that these were the broad descriptions of the position, then include it.
As an attachment.
As an attachment, yeah.
And I could do that by attaching it, amending it with an attachment, and then suspending it.
Sounds like a possibility. We're going to have to hire somebody quickly, that's for sure.
Well, that's correct, and it's possible as well that we would vote to do it, and nobody appropriate would be found, although I have heard some people expressing various levels of interest. Anyone have a problem with attaching it and amending and suspending?
I would rather that we consider it separately.
Okay, as a resolution, or as...
However you think you need to do it. I mean, I think from what you were saying earlier, that the administration could do this themselves.
Exactly.
Without council taking action.
Exactly.
But if you think that it needs council action, I'd rather it be...
I don't. I actually do not. I would rather just give it to the administration and follow through with the ordinance the way that it currently reads. I put this together primarily because Bujenka objected that I had not included it. So that was why I changed its form a little bit and brought it back to you. Paul?
And Ray, what's your two cents on this, Ray? Since if we decide not to do anything with this, and it's up to administration, I imagine you'll be somewhere in the loop of hiring a coordinator here.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, at this point, I guess the difficulty would be, yeah, thank you. I think if we're going to hire this person, I would want to know, before they're hired, what the expected outcomes are for that position. You know, is this person to promote Halloween, to not promote Halloween, and if we want to promote it, you know, in what direction? You know, I'm more than willing to support the whole process, but I think if council wants to move Halloween in a different direction, as representative of the community wanting to move it in a different direction, I need some indication of what that direction is. Otherwise, what I would do at this point is continue to do what I have been doing, and that's make sure that whatever happens, people are safe. In the long term, it may be a good thing to try to change the perception of Halloween to something other than what it is, but that's going to be a long process, and it will have to happen in juxtaposition and concurrently with the existing Halloween celebration. So my first emphasis and first responsibility will be to the public and to the public safety, and then I would try to do whatever we had energy and resources we had left to devote to whatever this person decided to do. And I would hope what they decide to do is what council wants done.
And to my way of thinking, the fact that we only have five months is a plus, because obviously, it isn't going to be hugely changed for this year, and then, if we see the direction a planner is going, then there's the opportunity to say, okay, we like this, we don't like this, with duh, 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 and perhaps be more specific.
Yeah, because this person will have to spend a good deal of time developing a set of committee chairpersons, because one person isn't going to be able to organize any kind of reasonable-sized event.
Right.
Without support, and that support will have to come from persons in the community who are willing to chair various committees in support of this person, and in support of whatever objectives this person has said they're attempting to accomplish. So probably the first several months, it's going to be spent trying to develop a committee.
Right.
Okay, and determining who's going to perform what tasks is associated with this kind of an event. So, yeah, it's gonna be very limited as to what this person can accomplish in the first year.
I assume when you plan your Halloween, you have a Halloween rulebook these days that you pull out every year, I assume, past twenty-three years?
Yeah, a, a set of procedures, yeah, things that we've done.
And that's mostly emphasizing safety, I imagine?
Yes.
With a secondary of cost, I imagine?
Secondary, secondarily with cost.
Okay.
For, a good, for example, is the current location of the stages is a function, as I recall our conversations among Wayne and Jonathan and some of the others, the selection of putting two stages at far ends of Court Street was a function of improving the flow of the crowd, because we were having problems with the crush of people in specific spots. So by putting the two bands out there, we've got the crowd moving in two different directions. Originally, we had vendors in the center, but the vendors objected to that because they felt very unsafe in the middle of the crowd. So then we moved vendors to either end. So all of those kinds of progressions of items have been based on safety, and it's been chronicled and documented and put in the file. And every year, we do an autopsy, if you will, and decide what do we need to do to tweak it for the next year. You know, we had a couple of things in our, in our thoughts for the, for the upcoming season, assuming that nothing else changes. So there would be some other minor changes we would make to improve safety.
And that process is what makes me feel comfortable with the administration basically handling this contract and that there is a, a process. And what we would need to do if we had a hired planner is to find that balance of how that person works with the administration. Do they eventually form a not-for-profit and handle it in that way and take some of the ownership of, of the city of Athens? That would be a possibility. Do they push it more and more towards family events and, and that sort of thing, or not? You know, those sort of things would be worked on with the combination of the administration, this group, advisory group, and the planner, and whatever volunteers they put together. So it would be a very collaborative effort. But I think that, I, I feel that if we're ever going to change it at all from what it currently is, and ever going to recover any of the taxpayers' funds, that we have to do something in terms of more specific planning.
I'd have to agree. So when you ask for guidance, really, again, we're still coming down to safety and then, and then money. Safety first, improving the safety. If we hire a coordinator, from my point of view, the coordinator's gonna be there to say, okay, how to make this safer? How to, in terms of, you know, events, in terms of coordinating how things work between organizations, pulling on board maybe more, more safety teams from other sources. I know Ron Lucas comes along and asks the neighborhood associations quite regularly for safety team members, and most of them shrug it off. But at the same time, there are other, there are other groups out there that could be approached, I imagine. I'm not sure I really want it to be built up as an event. You know, again, this is from Bajinka's class. I was asking the questions, what makes a good event? Is it a, you know, what makes a successful event? Are we up to thirty thousand, sixty thousand, a hundred thousand? Is that a success? Well, no, I mean, they, I was asking the question, they didn't have an answer for that, her business groups.
I was gonna say, who's in here?
What? Well, they don't know the carrying capacity of the Court Street here, I guess. I look at somebody who's gonna bring somebody in in terms of other sponsors, other sources, whether it's the students, whether it's the fraternities and other organizations, and offset the cost of the, the, you know, what we spent on last year. I know we'll be spending more this year, but the question is, can we, if we go sixteen thousand in, will we be getting something a little bit less? Will we be getting something more back? Will we be getting more vendors? Will we be getting more services? I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure that...
This will happen this way?
That would, that would happen, particularly this year. I mean, it's something that if we started, if we start now, I think you could effectively have something workable in place a year from October, and some basic rudiments of, of what you're trying to work towards in place this October. I'm not speaking as a safety service person, but as a past involvement in these kinds of events as an organizer. Because it takes a lot of time and coordination. But the thing, the key thing is knowing why you are doing what you are doing and what you're going to attempt to accomplish in the process. And my focus is gonna, if my focus is on safety, this person's focus has to be on raising money. I mean, if that's their key objective, then, then that's one thing. If their objective is to promote Halloween or un-promote Halloween or change the image of Halloween, that's different. And that person will have to pursue a different set of objectives.
I guess, I, this is just me, I'm looking at it and saying, they're, this person's supposed to be building resources to make it safer. I mean, what I'm hearing from the, what I hear from the city is that they're pretty much tapped out when it comes to resources, adding more layers of safety. You can't do more in terms of Halloween without more money.
Well, you know, in terms of money, yeah. I mean, the next, the next thing to do in, in terms of safety is just bringing in more bodies, you know?
The dialogue that we were having last year was, you know, sponsor Port Johns, sponsor police.
Okay.
To me, that means that frees up money for other activity, another safety aspects of it.
Right.
Again, this is what I, conceptually what I was hearing last year. I know none of it happened.
Exactly. And, and with a coordinator, that perhaps that could happen, that the system would get nailed down, and it did not last year.
Yeah.
Debbie?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you saying you wanted, like, a formal sense of council on this, so a resolution that would give you some indication from council, rather than just different individual members telling you what we, what...
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if I'm told to sign a contract with a person who's gonna perform this function, I need to know what is that person supposed to accomplish? Not just a list of tasks, but what are they supposed to accomplish in terms of outcomes and results?
Okay. So if we need to do a resolution, I, I think that if you're hoping to amend and suspend next week, you may not have the votes to do that. If you're adding it to an existing ordinance, it may be simpler to have it be its own standalone thing.
That makes sense.
As a resolution.
Mm-hmm. So perhaps I could get with you and, and talk about additions that we might do to be more specific to answer part of your question.
Yeah. What, how are we gonna evaluate this person?
One of the problems I have, though, is Bajinka had a real specific set of things, and I don't see those in these, in this particular statement, and so... It is her statement. Yeah, I know, but it's, she was even, management was her big word, management, management, management. I don't see that in there. I don't know, when I, I didn't have it in front of me when she talked to me, so I just don't know how this will come out. Well, supposedly, she'll be here next week. Mm-hmm. And I just wrote down, I wonder if she'll freak out. Okay, well, I, I will put together what I can put together and go from there. I have two short miscellaneous, this is just...
Carol, anybody from the audience, maybe? Anybody wanna say anything?
Did you, Bill? Sorry, go ahead.
Come up and, yep.
You have to give your name and your address. Sorry, I forgot, I knew you were sitting there.
Neil Hayes, Bee Hollow Road. And for those folks on Cable Lane, I feel their pain, actually. I've been nearly run over there a few times myself. But onto the Halloween issue. First off, and this is really the reason why I came here tonight, was to applaud council for taking what I think is, is a very positive, or at least considering, taking a very positive step with respect to Halloween. In the many discussions that we've all been engaged in with respect to Halloween over the years, frequently, we, we try to bring in the image of other events like Comfest. And we've been focusing on what we can do to, to, you know, ameliorate the, the debt, the burden, the financial burden that Halloween presents to the city. But I would, instead, when you're considering this position, like, for you to think of other events as well, such as spring break in various cities in Florida, and one even closer to home, Bridge Day in West Virginia, where the tiny little burg of Fayetteville closes it down with cooperation of the state tourism department, closes down two lanes of State Route 19 over the New River Gorge there, and allows people, insane people, I must admit, to jump off that bridge with parachutes for one day out of the year. They used to do this, this was a spontaneous thing that people have done there for years, and it was not safe, and it caused a lot of accidents, and a lot of people were injured. If you've ever been to that event now, it is literally the Christmas for that community. It's an extremely positive event, it brings out a lot of vendors, they make a tremendous amount of money on that. There's a little bit of traffic congestion as a result of it, but it has overall been shaped and turned into an extremely positive event for that community and for the many thousands, tens of thousands of people who go there every year. And although I'm not promoting an increase in the crowd with respect to Halloween, I do think that, that Halloween being, having been born much in the same way as this, this desire for people to jump off the bridge in Fayetteville, as a spontaneous, non-sanctioned event, I think that it does point out that, that if we would work together and take a long-term goal or objective, that we can take this event that we now see as a burden for the most part, and turn it into something that is very, very positive for a much broader segment of the community. It will, as Ray has and others have pointed out, take a great deal of time to achieve that objective. So I would beseech council to, to do whatever they can, if they do elect to move forward with this position, to ensure that we do have long-range objectives in mind. And that's really all I have to say about it tonight, folks. Amazingly.
Thank you, Bill. Jennifer, did you...
I assume that listserv is still up and running, that from last year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that should be something we should be hopefully...
I just checked that it is operating.
Okay, so we should hear things jangling and that.
I got his email, so it must be working.
I go through email, so it's working.
Okay.
Okay, the first thing that I wanna pass around here is just the verification that the seventy-five thousand dollars from the state has come in and been deposited in the recreation fund for the soccer complex. So I just thought that would, was a bit of good news. And the other...
This is mine. This is not cash.
Right, don't try to cash that. I also am passing around an ordinance, sixty-five, two thousand. And this is an ordinance that we passed in two thousand, allowing alcohol for special events at the community center. And I would like to amend this ordinance to include Arts West. There have been several activities, private activities, that have asked to get the F permits for wine or beer at Arts West. And so I would like to introduce this amendment next week and...
How about this very room? Could you add that to the list?
This very room, what a good idea.
You've been drinking a drink, Bill, is that...
But if indeed Arts West is considered as an extension of the community center, it, it makes sense to me that we would have that. So I'll bring this up for first reading, so you've got three readings to contemplate. Paul?
Carol, are there any guidelines in terms of the community events, drinking in either the community center or the potential of Arts West? I mean, is there some kind of...
There is a policy and procedure established by the mayor and the chief of police.
Okay.
Quite specific.
Is it possible, get a copy of that sometime? I was approached by Emily Saturday, I think, about this issue, and I, I didn't have any problem with it, but I know we pretty much don't allow that in parks, is that the case?
Right.
Okay. And I'm just wondering what the difference, I know there's a difference, one's outside, one's, you know? But at the same time, I'd be interested in seeing what parameters exist for this. Okay?
And also, I'm just gonna, could you ask the community center to give us some idea of how frequently this happens there?
Not terribly, but they have, like, weddings sometimes or some sort of reception, but I can't get an actual number. Anything else? If not, Arts and Recreation is...
Okay, the last, the next one is, not the last, by any means, Environment Committee. I just wanted to inform you that we put the application together for Cool Cities. The mayor and myself and Andy Stone have contacted people for it. I'm not sure if the application actually went out. Debbie did it? The application for Cool Cities?
Oh, I thought you were going to talk about it.
Okay, well, I think there's not much really to talk about. We did a resolution on it, if you remember, and, and said we wanted to join. Again, the mayor is, is into it, and again, we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint over time. So I think we'll be putting that ahead, unless somebody has any other commentary they want to put on it. I'll get you copies of it, if that's possible, just so you have an idea, as well as the website and what we're asking for, what they're asking for. Any comments on that? The other miscellaneous there is the garbage rates, which I'll let Ray talk about a little bit, but this is a spillover of communication from Ed Newman, who was trying to get people to recycle? Yes. People recycling some of the fraternities and sororities and finding out they weren't being charged excessive amounts, therefore they had no real stimulus to recycle there. And we realized at one point, we didn't really have a good scale for higher densities, over ten at the time, I believe. Is that the phrase? Do you wanna add anything to this?
No, basically, we, when we made the revisions here a couple of years ago, the, the highest rate category we considered was rooming house ten and above. And in the interim, we've gone out and pulled in some fraternity and sorority houses that weren't part of the city's system prior to that. And in the process, we've, you know, our rate structure kind of got out of whack. Some of them were paying occupant-based rates, and some of them were paying for dumpsters. And then the dumpsters are always problematic, so...
Okay. And I see, I have copies of the ordinances that are being amended there, the eighty-two oh four and the, let's see, one is the forty-one oh six ordinance. These are the fee changes that we had last time. The other thing I wanted to ask while we're on this topic is I know the solid waste and control officer is now, is one of his duties was to actually start exploring the situation uptown for, in terms of the trash and how it's relying. So you're gonna be doing that this summer?
Yes, we have, we have a walkthrough scheduled, I think it's next week.
Okay.
To basically walk the uptown, talk about some of the physical issues.
Okay.
Got one of, a retired code officer coming in to, to help in terms of...
Bill?
Charlie Miller.
Okay.
Who did the uptown area for a number of years, to help in terms of identifying some of the real problem areas that we've had, so.
Okay.
Give him some background. So he's, he's prepared to deal with some of the issues more effectively.
Okay, and the handhelds are up and running for this solid waste district, I assume?
No.
No. And what's the deal with that?
No, I'm still working with, with the programmer, and it will, it will get done. That's been the most aggravating, frustrating, unsuccessful venture, so, but it will happen.
Okay.
Could you explain to me what is going on here?
Wait, Ray's saying, okay. Debbie first?
I was about the proposed change that you've got happening here. I don't see how this will encourage them to recycle, because it looks like the fee level is based on the number of occupants, not the number of containers that they... is based on the number of occupants, not the number of containers that they produce. So if it's based on the number of occupants, they don't save any money by producing less trash.
I assumed it has to do with how often they pick it up, too.
Well, that's one of the questions.
I mean, we have to make it be a pay-as-you-throw rather than based on how many people there are if we want it to result in less solid waste.
I agree. Comments?
Yeah, I fully support that. The problem that we encounter in dealing with it in reality is that dumpsters, particularly in the uptown area, are not promoting recycling. The problem that we have with fraternities and sororities and the uptown area, and they fall into a similar category, dumpsters in the uptown area, you cannot identify to whom belongs the trash. I spent a number of years fighting through constant battles about extra yardage on dumpsters because people use a dumpster as though, almost as though it's a community trash dump. It's the problem that we have with the trash cans on Court Street multiplied 10 times because it's not that visible. You know, it's pretty easy to walk by somebody's dumpster and throw extra trash in. So what I'm trying to, over a period of time, move the system towards is first getting the trash off the streets and out of the yards. Then, the next thing that Michael will be working on is improve storage of the trash. And then finally, we'll go to, we'll go to, hopefully, I can convince council, to go to prepaid bags for trash. And that will apply to dumpster customers, non-dumpster customers, Court Street customers, residential customers. So if you generate the trash and you put it in the bag, it will be picked up. And that eliminates the problem of the persons who pay for the dumpster rent having to pay for other people's trash being removed.
How do you keep somebody from just throwing the trash in the dumpster anyway?
You mean, if you have a bag system?
Well, if you have the bag system, but I don't use your bags, I just throw it in my neighbor's dumpster.
Don't know yet. Haven't thought about that one.
At 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, well, maybe a locked dumpster is the answer, I don't know. There may be ways. I love the idea, I remember many years ago, Paul saying that when you buy something, the cost of disposing it should be included in the price of the purchase, which is truly the way to go. I love your idea, I'm just not sure how you...
Well, yeah, and the uptown is a real challenge. The uptown is a real challenge because if we try to charge the persons who live and run businesses uptown based strictly on their volume, then we have to have a method to control the identification of the trash. I know that sounds ridiculous, but if you're gonna have a pay-as-you-throw system, you have to know, this is the person who put the trash out and that's who gets charged for it.
Now, wait a second, if the dumpster is owned by somebody and they're getting charged by the volume at that point, they would make sure, they know who's throwing trash in their dumpster at that point. I mean, they would lock it eventually.
They would have to, they would have to either put a lid and lock on it, or they'd have to put a 24-hour guard out there.
Well, lid and lock, I've seen in, I saw that in the 80s on California, so I'm not surprised it's still...
It's at the food pantry, we have a lock.
University does not, of course.
Well, they're just gonna have the departments pay.
Yes.
Let me see.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, you've got actually two fees here, one being the franchise area has the rate by dumpster, that's the old Schedule A there, and the outside the franchise isn't by occupancy, is that what I'm reading here?
I don't understand that at all.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I don't even understand the first thing right here.
That's the way Ari had it placed, didn't we?
No, you have something crossed out.
Are we gonna talk about the 1 to 3?
No, owner occupied section.
Two 30-gallon containers per week. The $10 fee is crossed out. $10 maximum, two 30-gallon containers per week.
It's because it's down in the next part.
As an occupant?
Yes.
One to three occupants?
Mm-hmm.
So we're giving up the idea of somebody manages to get down to one 30-gallon container a week?
No, it's...
No, what you're seeing is the second, the bold saying owner occupied and rental units, it's been moved down to the next section.
Yeah, we're removing, removing the distinction between owner occupied and rentals, so we don't get into any issues about charging rentals, one to three persons in a single-family home, a different rate than we charge one to three persons in apartment building, that's all. It all comes out the same.
If they have four kids, then they're gonna have to be $15?
No, no. That's the single-family...
Well, that's what it says.
A single family.
That's what it says.
No matter how many kids you got.
Single-family or...
Or unrelated occupancy.
Or unrelated occupants. Should read, I don't have a copy of it.
So the family would be the same as the unrelated?
Yeah, your family could have 14 people in it.
And if it had 14 people, you'd be paying $40?
No, you'd be paying single-family rate.
That's not what it says right now.
Well, it's just, this is, because it's edited, if we could see it before we pass it so we know what it looks like, it would be easier. I think it's a, you know, basically, I know Ed Newman talked to the frat boys and they said that, but how many of them actually pay the bill? It's paid by the chapter house, for crying out loud. They don't even...
He's just trying to recycle.
I know. Even the beer bottles would help, I know.
Yes.
Yeah, the single-family, it should say, single-family or one to three occupants, basically, is what, make some revision to it.
And how many are there? I mean, and this is occupants actually beds used, right, by the frat?
Permitted occupancy, yeah. The largest one, I think, is 59 right now.
And it's sometimes...
And some of them are paying less and some are paying more than what they should.
Offhand, how many dumpsters exist for residences outside the franchise area? Because that's what we're trying to cover in this new section, right?
Yeah, and they're primarily in the fraternity and sorority, a few rooming houses, because we don't, we don't do commercial outside the franchise area. The only place the city does commercial is in the franchise area.
But we did the bigger swoop from high down to the river that allowed...
High density, wasn't it?
Yeah, the high-density area. So you have to go back and check that one, because we do permit the commercial, which would be the sorority and fraternity houses, to be ours.
And then we changed the language to include fraternities and sororities.
And the high-density zone, so-called.
Which is Mill Street, I think.
Which includes Mill Street, but goes from High Street to the river.
Mm-hmm. But it doesn't include commercial stores?
Well, commercial would be, would be sororities and fraternities usually, wouldn't it?
No.
Yeah, I mean, commercial is based upon a definition in the code, which is probably bankrupt, but it's there.
Yeah, under the old, the old rate structure, they were considered commercial, and then when you changed it to 10 units, okay, anything up to 10 units, or less than 10 units, up to nine units was residential, and also included fraternities and sororities in addition to rooming houses. Because prior to that, fraternities and sororities were, even if they weren't commercial, they were excluded from our route.
Okay, it sounds like it still needs a little work there, then.
Yeah.
At least in the wording.
I wonder how much of this was done.
04 was when we included these sororities here. Based on occupancy, rental units, including houses, apartments, rooming houses, kind of in answer to fraternities and sororities, based on unit occupancy. So we did that in 82, the 8204 ordinance.
I think there was even a map.
Hmm, I think you're...
Wrong.
No, I think you're right. There was a map, but I don't know if that covered this actual...
Maybe.
These, I think it had to do with the idea of trying to pick up twice a week down there, remember?
I can't remember.
Okay, we included that as a, I'll have to go back and look at that map.
How does this relate to Schedule A, then?
That's for the franchise area, isn't it?
No, Schedule A dumpsters.
Yeah, dumpsters in the...
Schedule A dumpster rates, remember back to when we were talking, no, right here, this thing right here.
Yeah, I thought that referred to this.
So is every single...
See here, franchise dumpster, as related to Schedule A.
Oh, well, that's for...
That's for probably pickup cans, franchise dumpsters in Schedule A.
So they go over, but this is also just dumpsters down on Stewart Street, too, isn't it?
I don't think so.
Is this...
There are some, there are some dumpsters out there by choice of the property owner where they have, they're paying for a dumpster through the city and they're, and they're not in a required area, like down...
Stewart.
Stewart Street, and then also over on Elliott, we have a place where there are like six or seven houses that have a dumpster. There's, there are like a half a dozen other places where we've put dumpsters in place, but they're, you know, they're for multiple locations, not just for one.
Okay, I think this is not gonna be put up next week, because it needs more work, and I want to look at this closer.
Yeah.
Something has a disconnect going on.
No, that's, it's, you know, I can understand more with, but I want to know, have we implemented this low, the lowest fee paid in the franchise area is $9.50, right? And if they have one, one pickup, $21.32, and then goes on up, and then goes over to Schedule A, has that been implemented?
The franchise, commercial rates? Those are the old rates that were, the old rate schedule that was in existence for years for franchise business.
So is that, does every single housing unit in the uptown area pay $9.50 a month?
Every apartment pays at least $9.50.
At least, and then it goes beyond it?
Yeah, they pay the same rate structure for apartments than anybody else does in the city. The only thing that's different is the commercial businesses, and those are, for whatever reason, they were called special franchise rates at one time.
They should be higher because they're harder to pick up.
Well, yeah, here again, they're very difficult to control because how do you know when it's set at the curb in front of a building whether it belongs to the residents upstairs or the store downstairs?
You can tell.
Okay, so I assume Mike will be working on this this summer, right?
In the uptown, yeah, we're gonna start working on the uptown.
Okay, that's what you were just talking about, the problem there.
Yeah, because these rates will have to be revised also.
Okay. I'd be interested to find out how many dumpsters exist outside the franchise area and how they coordinate with, how they correlate with the occupancy, is it, you know, in terms of, if they were putting cans out versus dumpsters?
Well, the other, the other element on the dumpsters is the time element, because if you have a small area and a small dumpster, you might want to have it picked up more often, as opposed to a big dumpster and less frequency.
And that's not reflected in the cost of the scale we're looking at right here?
What is on this?
Well, no, but not on this one.
On the franchise or on the...
Off the franchise.
I don't get what this means.
Straight by occupancy, it doesn't tell you.
You mean, you're gonna have a can for every three people, or what?
It's basically dumpster schedule right here.
Is that a dumpster schedule?
Yes, isn't it?
I don't know.
Take a look at it. Volume is based on family, singular, and related occupancy, move dumpster rates with Schedule A.
$190, but you don't have anything for the number of times a week it gets picked up yet, right?
No.
That's a problem.
See, one of the, one of the most fundamental problems with the uptown area as well is that I don't think there's communication between the landlords and the tenants, and I bet if I sent students up in Falk Porter and had the masses there, even after they did the wonderful thing we designed about landlord-tenant education, that they still don't know when they're supposed to put their garbage out and where.
No, they don't.
And the idea of walking down the stairs and across the street and down three blocks to put it in a dumpster, I mean, I just don't see that that's in the works at all, so I hope you don't come back with that.
No, they're, they're just putting it in the nearest dumpster or the nearest trash can.
Yes, I would.
Whatever, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's garbage.
Because the infrastructure uptown does not exist for effective removal of trash.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You know, and we've got to work on creative solutions to that, and hopefully, Michael has some, Michael will have some time to work on that.
It's more than just ticketing, too, it's just the education component.
Well, actually, in theory, he's supposed to be doing a survey of what's uptown, if I understand correctly. He's supposed to be looking at seeing what is and how to fix, what do we have exactly right now? If I understand, that's what his task is.
Part of it, yeah. I mean, he's got to factor that in. If you're gonna come up with new solutions, you've got to understand the existing problems and what are there.
Okay.
And then look at how those things can be put together in a more effective way.
The problem is not recalcitrant students, though, as I see it.
No.
The problem is lack of information in a downtown area that was not designed for the purpose for which it's currently being put.
Right. There are no, well, there are very limited availability of service alleys, and those that do exist are difficult to get through, so.
With big trucks.
Yeah, with huge trucks, which that process needs to be changed, too.
Okay, so this needs to work, hopefully we'll get some handhelds reprogrammed sooner than later. Is there anything else you want to add on this right now?
Now, this, this one, I'll have Paula get with you and work on this one.
I'll be with her then on that. In terms of the hazardous waste pickup, have you had any conversations with Athens Hocking Waste District?
No, I have not.
Okay. Maybe we should get together and start talking about that eventually, and that will require looking at the budget of the garbage as well, solid waste budget, which I'd like to see some numbers eventually. I guess I should look them up. I shall. Well...
Yeah, we should get you a monthly report.
Yes, I don't think I've seen one, the breakdown, I haven't seen one lately.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else in environment? Noise ordinance you covered already?
Paul?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank everybody that came to the Wellhead Protection Education meeting, full house, administrators, council people, and lots of business people, very successful event, so excellent.
Yeah, it was well-attended. I thought it was educational from my point of view. I think I talked to somebody who was a little bit thrown off by the, all the acronyms out there and the five-minute, you know, presentations.
Yes, there was some concern, but at least they started asking specific questions, and I, apparently, following up a bit on that, there's, there've been some good questions that have come out of it and some good discussions.
And I'm aware that there was going to be another one for residents eventually, I think that was in the mix somewhere down the line.
At this time, we're looking at, in addition to the ordinance for residential, modeled after senior, I think it's senior. And they actually do have a portion of their ordinance for the residents, and so that's what we're working towards.
Okay. I'd like to hear what the, what happens with them. Anything else in Environment Committee? Go ahead, Debbie.
I wanted to thank you for your role in that. I thought it was really well put together and well organized, and it was, it's a good job.
A lot of very knowledgeable people there that knew the answers, and perhaps they needed to simplify it somewhat more, but...
Right. I, I have a question about the ordinance, if you're looking at possible amendments. I was under the impression, the last time we amended it, that we had made a change to require least toxic biological substances for any, like pesticides, herbicides, and I thought that applied to everything, and it was clear in the presentation that it does not apply to large recreational areas.
Yes, it does.
Well, it had in their best management practices that referred to, you know, pesticide use, and in reading, I read back through the ordinance, and the least toxic biological substances is in the section that I think is referring to smaller areas, so I would want us to look at that closely, because I think it was our intention that that applied to everything.
Right. I do think that the best practice, best management practice does include that, but we could be more specific and include both.
Maybe we can talk about that a little bit more.
I'd have to agree, I think it needs...
It would be good to have that specific guidance, because there's so much going on at that point in time in developments.
Anything else in environment? Okay. Debbie, yours?
Okay, planning and development. The first thing... Okay, planning and development. The first thing on the agenda is to talk again about Shady Lane. I don't know if people have a copy of this that, that Debbie Walker provided to me, I guess not. Just a quick reminder about what has been going on with Shady Lane. This is out in the plains. There was an issue where in the, the process of this development, having changed hands and the developers not, I think that that particular partnership ended up out of business. There's, so some of it is now owned by the bank, some of it is owned by individual property owners, and the road is in disrepair. The bond was released at some point in that process between the county and the city, you know, dealing with this development. So there is no bond on the road, it's in poor condition and the people who live there are concerned about safety and, and access. So the, there were a couple of meetings where some folks from the city met with the county commissioners and the county engineer to talk about how we could deal with this, and the general idea was that we could go ahead and fix the road so that it's passable by emergency vehicles and that people can get to their homes and then to put in place an assessment process based on road frontage so that the property owners would pay something and the, and that would include the bank, which owns a, a pretty big portion of the land that hasn't yet been, that doesn't have houses on it. The price tag, the, the estimate that we have, which I think is from the county engineer's office, yes, is a total of $29,960. The commissioners are going to be going out and looking at the road tomorrow. They would like to hear something back from us since the county and the city both had a role in how this whole thing was handled with the bond being released and we're not going to go, I think, any, any further down the road of exactly whose fault it is, but we need to get this road fixed and then go after the folks to make sure that, that the owners pay for the, the cost of the repair, since that really was their responsibility to get it into decent shape so that it could be publicly accepted. So the first question is, are we willing to contribute something to get the road fixed? It's an unusual situation. I don't believe it would set any kind of precedent because I, I'm not aware of other situations where there's, there's a road out there that wasn't accepted that doesn't have a bond, so.
I actually thought we already discussed this and set an amount that we were willing to toss in.
I thought we were talking about a percentage, the idea that if we could get it reimbursed after all the bank and litigation settled.
We said a percentage up to-
To, yeah.
Up to 10,000?
I think that's what we were talking about.
I don't think we took any formal action on that and the commissioners were-
I don't think we did either, but we did have the discussion at length and came up with that language that the night that we talked about. I don't think we-
No, I don't think we did.
We didn't do a resolution.
No.
Okay. So if people are comfortable with that, we can use that language and go ahead and just do a resolution so that they have official action from council and know what our commitment is.
Okay, so we've got different things. We've got a percentage up till 10,000 with the idea we try getting reimbursement back.
Yes.
And the road will be owned by the township when it's all done? Is that a run through discussion or?
I think that the county and the township trustees need to work that out.
Okay.
Who's going to actually, whether it's going to be a township road or a county road, I think is not something that we need, it will not be our road.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Right. I think it's going to be a township road, but that's kind of between them.
Okay.
Phil?
I shouldn't do this.
Uh-oh.
I can't help myself. I can't, yeah, but here I go. I cannot think of another example where the taxpayers of the city of Athens have paid for a road improvement outside of the city of Athens. Can anyone give me an example of that happening? So I guess we are admitting some type of liability that we think we've done something wrong that necessitates us paying for this. Is that the logic I'm hearing here?
That's not the way that the conversation seemed to be proceeding. It was more looking at the fact that this problem exists and all, you know, everybody involved wants to find a way to solve it. I, I don't think it, it felt at all like somebody was saying one entity or another is at fault for this. It was more of a problem solving, now that we're here, how do we get through it, a kind of conversation. And I, I believe that we will get that money back. You know, if we have to put a lien on the property, we'll get the money back. So I, I don't think that-
Lien on what property?
The, the other lots.
The balance and second, not second.
A mechanic's lien?
It's just a lien that you can't sell your property.
And we have a, and we are doing that because we've put money into the road so we are able to put a lien on unsold lots next to it.
Not unsold lots.
I wouldn't count on getting the money back, I guess that's all I'm saying. I've, I don't see that you've got the right to do a mechanic's lien. I don't know that there's any kind of board enabling way to go here. Now, if you want to do it, it's, you know, it's okay, but this is very unusual. I've never seen it.
Gary Hunter was in a couple of those meetings and did seem comfortable with the idea that we could proceed and there'd be a way to assess the property owners based on road frontage. You know, so, and I think that the county is interested in being reimbursed for their share as well. They don't have a bunch of extra money to fix roads that aren't publicly accepted roads yet, so.
And what was the percentage that we discussed?
We'll have to look back at the notes because I, I had a whole folder on this.
Do you remember which meeting it was? I do. It was the one we were down there with the coach run.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, so we, we'll have the notes from that meeting.
Okay.
We'll just get that language back out and go ahead and move it through so we have some formal action. Okay?
Yeah.
Site plan review. We asked Steve to go through and put in code citations for each of the, the portions of this that refer to other parts of the code. I have two extra copies of this if anybody else wants one to look at. Members of council, I think that we now have everything in here that people wanted, you know, questions answered and, and code citations in there so that we're sure that this is referring to other relevant sections of code. So comments, questions, discussion? And we did at a previous meeting get the answers about the traffic study and some of those other questions.
So nothing's been changed since our previous discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I love it.
The only thing that's in here is the, the references to our existing code. Anyone else wishing to talk to us about this? Jennifer?
Jennifer Simon with the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce. This is the first time that I've seen this. Obviously, I've seen bits and pieces of it within the comprehensive plan, so, you know, I know the bones of it. So I think it's important, and Debbie, you and I have talked about this, that citizens, both citizens and developers have a clearly defined process to, to go forward. And I think, you know, the chamber in, in that vein is reconvening a, a working group, Steve Pearson and, and several others, citizens and developers, by mid-July, you may have received the email, to review the outline of the existing process in general, because I think there are some inconsistencies and this gives us an opportunity to look at that and have, you know, again, that educational opportunity for all of us to fully understand how the process works. I just want to offer that if there is an opportunity for the chamber to provide input into this or for businesses to provide input, we would, we would appreciate that. I don't know if you're planning to put this forward at the next meeting.
I think we're ready to do that. We did have a, at the local government affairs committee meeting at the chamber, at your request, we had a meeting around the table to go through this in pretty extensive detail and you all didn't join us that evening, so. I mean, I think if you want to take this back and, and people need to go through it, there's, there's always, you know, if you find something that we need to hear about, I think you should definitely let us know.
Well, and I apologize if we missed that it wasn't a, you know, something that was done purposefully and I, I mean, obviously we want to make sure that we're fully engaged in the process.
Are there any specific things that you already, that you know your members are concerned about?
You know, I, I think that, without going into it in great detail, because there are others that could speak better to this than I, you know, obviously the site plan review concerns that we hear from developers, the cost associated with, you know, upfront, you know, how detailed these plans need to be in the beginning without any hope or any, you know, I guess guarantee of being able to move forward. And then also having a clear idea as to whether or not the, the guidelines, you know, are they, are they, are they changing? Are, you know, is it going to give another opportunity for, for us not to really have that clearly defined process? And so, you know, they're not necessarily objections, just things for us to think about as, as we move forward.
Paul, could you have something?
Yeah, 40106, standards for review. There's no, there's not actually anything about nuisances. Gee, I, I don't see any citation for G, I guess. I'm just wondering. I guess it'd cover a lot of different areas in the code that I'm just trying. And F as well. I just imagine that has some code language in there someplace.
There used to be some wording on, on section G in the code, but it got, it got dumped at one point.
On nuisances?
Yeah, in the 03 rewrite of the zoning code.
Okay.
But just where the, how about where the noise ordinance is as one citation?
And general nuisances.
Reasonable noise, smoke, vapors. So the rewriting the zoning code in 03 missed.
Something.
It dumped off some of the miscellaneous things, but I think like noise ordinance still applies, so.
The general nuisance.
How refuse and collection and waste storage, wouldn't that be, well, we were just, some section of five, I imagine?
Yeah, proper storage and disposal of waste.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just wondering.
We can get the solid waste citation in there.
Okay, so we can do.
It's in the housing code and it's also in the utilities.
Yeah, utilities.
So you have to put both in. The other thing I would like to see, given our experience with the famous pump station, is in addition to adequacy of proposed water and sewer storm drainage, redevelopment, some kind of statement about redevelopment requiring, redevelopment areas or new developments requiring a review of existing infrastructure, make sure you're not building on top of it.
We never do that.
Well, I mean, I think that we are going to have a very expensive experience here shortly.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how to say it exactly, but certainly you could comply with the applicable regulations and still build on top of an existing sewer and destroy it.
Well, actually, the section compatibility with plans for public infrastructure, I mean compatibility with present infrastructure would be covering some of that, I would hope.
Well, then should we leave that up?
Yeah.
Okay. That's E you're talking about.
Ray, do you want to?
Yeah, I was going to say currently wherever, wherever we see that happening, you know, we currently object to it. I mean, that, the situation that we're facing in one section uptown here, if somebody had known at the time that building was going in, that they were putting it over a sanitary, it was a bad decision, we wouldn't do that now. That's against our standards.
Okay. I'm aware that on the tree commission, there's a, a desire to have actually, when they're looking at landscaping even, where the infrastructure's below that because they have cases where they want to plant trees where there's water lines or, they're aware of the power lines 90% of the time because that's where the trees get trimmed and they don't like that, but there's other places where it's going to go right into, you know, a water pipe or something like that, so.
Yeah, yeah, but ALP is incorporating some of that into the tree commission proceedings to pull in the utility plans.
But that should be also existing and building buildings, not just planting trees.
Right.
Okay.
Would it address that if in E, I changed it to compatibility with existing and planned public infrastructure?
Okay.
So we've just got that in there clearly.
Sounds like it might work.
Anything else?
Not that I can see offhand.
Ray?
May I ask why it wouldn't include planned unit developments?
They're already covered. This would be, the site plan review, review would be for things that are not covered by our existing regulations for planned unit developments and subdivisions.
But planned unit developments are in, are in section 21.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know. I think it's just confusing to say that we're not going to review because this, everything that's in here need to be done to a planned unit development. And this references other, you know, other portions of the code that we need to apply in the process outside of title 21. I mean, it's just confusing to somebody, oh, I'm going to plan unit development, so I don't have to follow any of these.
How about if we just say which are covered under title 21?
Maybe just-
Just reference where planned unit developments are, are in the code?
Why don't we just break it?
Break it?
Mm-hmm.
Then I think if there is any inconsistency between these requirements and the requirements for a planned unit development, it could lead to confusion. I, I think I'd rather say planned unit developments are covered elsewhere.
Well, if they're enforced, but the problem has been that sometimes we don't enforce them or notice it.
But if we don't exempt it, then a planned unit development would be subject to this review and the current review for planned unit developments.
Could you say something like the proposed planned unit developments are, are given this review under title 21? Or, you know, say it in a positive way rather than exempting? I don't know. If it's, if it's a heartfelt objection, we probably need to think about it.
I thought it was, I thought it is exempt. F?
It is.
Okay, so what are you saying? You're saying that we want-
Just saying that it is already done when we're properly implementing.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying. Is it done to this extent and really referencing all the things that this does? And if it doesn't, this might be a better place for it to be reviewed, is what I'm hearing. Is that what you're saying, Ray?
Yeah, I, I would think that if this, if this is a thorough and comprehensive site plan review process, then it should supersede anything else we have.
These site plan reviews are, are done by the planning commission. Planned unit developments then also come through council and are subject to public hearings beyond what happens at the planning commission. So I, I don't think this is meant to be as thorough a review as something, as big as a planned unit development. It is a more thorough review than we currently have for these smaller things, but I would like the 4102F to say applications for proposed planned unit developments, which are reviewed under Athens City Code Title 21.
Okay.
Just to make it clear that they're reviewed somewhere, but this is not the, because I don't want to set up any conflict where people think they should be under one or the other and we should be careful.
And choose which one in favor of late, you know.
Right. Nancy?
I, I guess I was thinking that the law director said with the NCR case that if the planning commission deemed that they had completed the requirements, then they were completed. So I'm a little concerned about, I mean, I, I think your solution is ideal, but I, I think that there is that out, that point out there, although we did go through and spend a lot of time, as we all recall on it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Anything else?
Not that I can see right now.
And, and I guess that what we would say is the idea behind this is to make the, is not to stop anything because that wouldn't be something we would do. It's to make it as good as it can be, meeting all the- meeting all the needs and all the demands of a specific area, which I think maybe would apply to the comments that Jennifer suggested earlier. I think people shouldn't see efforts that, the efforts that we make is trying to stop anything because I don't think we've stopped anything. Well, I guess we have lately, but we didn't do it. I think instead what you would say is that if you're going to build something here, then you jolly well better meet the needs of our area, which have site and, site plans that are problematical from either slope or, or floodplain. And you have to take care of the negative externalities. You can't force them off on someone else and that's fundamentally what this is trying to do. So let's get it going.
So I will get the citation for solid waste and waste storage and I'll look, I believe there is a general section on nuisances. Not, well, the noise ordinance, but also nuisances in general. And I'll see if it seems to fit here. Maybe that's why it came out of the zoning code because it's elsewhere in the city code.
They used to have standards that were never enforced.
Okay.
Like older and.
So good to bring this forward if we have those two things? Okay. One miscellaneous is just a reminder that we should, I think we have a public hearing scheduled next week for university estates for the Grand Vista Village. And that is at what time, Debbie?
Seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. So if anyone has anything they want to share with us about that, we, it's my understanding that the one thing that we don't have from them yet is the response from Burgess and Nifel about the soil stability and they know that we need to have that before we would go to first reading. So they do, they have sent the engineering to Burgess and Nifel and I think they expect that to be back in our hands. Any other miscellaneous for planning and development? Thanks.
We're done.
Look at the noise ordinance, everybody.